All right, it looks like we are recording, so I will call our work session to order. It is a work session between the City Council, the Planning Commission, and the HRA. And there's one topic for the next hour, which is an introductory presentation of the redevelopment proposal for the Hub Shopping Center by the representatives of Bricksmore Property Group, and I will pass it to City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to pass it shortly to Community Development Director Melissa Palman, but just wanted to remind everybody that tonight is informational only. We are looking for the Council and the HRA and the Planning Commission for their initial feedback on the proposed plans. So, Community Development Director.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to turn it over right away to Bricksmore. Tonight, we've got Rich Dipolito and Lauren Robinson of Bricksmore with their team here to talk to us about the Hub redevelopment site. Included in your packet are the guiding principles that were developed for this site as part of the comprehensive plan just a few years ago. So, we were anticipating, hoping for something to happen here at the Hub, and I think those are a good guide for you as you're reviewing this initial concept. So, I'll turn it right over to Rich.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the time tonight and look forward to a good conversation about this. I'm Rich Dipolito with Bricksmore Property Group. I'm here with Lauren Robinson, my associate, and also our architects from RSP, Architects Todd Novak and Young No. And we are very early in the process on this, so we've really just started having conversations with some of our tenants. Don't have any final agreements in place, so we are very early on, but we wanted to come to you and get your thoughts on what we're thinking and kind of share some ideas with you and just have some good, hopefully some good conversation and some good feedback and discussion about how we could best utilize this property. So, you all know it extremely well, and is there a pointer on here? Does it show up? It doesn't, okay.
Sorry.
Well, I'll try to describe things. Most of you know what it is. So, we own the property you see encircled in red, so there's a Popeyes Restaurant right along 66th Street that we do not own, but it is, it's party to the REA, so we're working closely with them on the redevelopment. Rainbow Foods has been dark for some time, which is directly behind that, and then SciTech Academy is behind. Okay.
It had to be on.
Oh.
It's that button.
The red button?
Yep.
Ah, there we are, okay. A lot of our tenants here have terms that are expiring, but there are some tenants that have longer-term leases that we need to work with who wish to remain. So, we're, part of our development plan, as you'll see, just really works around them and works with them to move them around the site. Marshalls, who is here in the center, has a long-term lease, Walgreens over here, and then Burger King out front. So, part of our plan really thinks about how do we work through keeping them onsite, come up with a plan that is a lot more current. As you probably know, the center was developed in 1953, so it has a little bit of age on it, and admittedly needs a little love. So, we're here to talk to you about that. So, Young, if you could go to the master plan, I'm going to circle back to a phasing plan here to help you understand what we're thinking about. But we have been approached by a major tenant who's interested in the site, 100,000 square feet. They will have a grocery component, which I think is really important for this area. Kind of surprised Rainbow Foods didn't make it, but you know, there is a need for grocery here, and it's a, they provide a good quality product that I'm sure you will like. I'm not at liberty to tell you who that is at this point, but I haven't heard anything, haven't heard any negatives, so I can tell you that. Marshalls is currently located here. We're looking at moving them over to the side, and then Walgreens moving them down here to the street and moving Burger King down to the street. But the plan is to come in with some residential. We really thought it was important to introduce residential into the project, so we're looking at probably somewhere around 450 units of multifamily residential, be built in two phases. There'll be a Phase One, which would be this kind of U shape down here, and then you'll see later in the model, this is actually kind of an M shape that creates kind of an interesting vista through this main street, which would be a Phase Two of the residential. The Signal is down over here, so as you come in off of the Signal, our thought is to create something that feels like a Main Street here. We'll have retail here, we'll have ground floor units off of the residential, walkout units, so people will have patios out front. Just create kind of a nice feel as you come in off of the Main Street. As I mentioned earlier, Walgreens will be to the side here. We'll have our main tenant in the back, and then we're, we really wanted to screen the parking with retail around the perimeter. So, our vision for all of this is retail and restaurants. We'll have some sort of a plaza on the corner here. We hadn't quite developed that yet, but the thought is to really create a gathering space here that responds to the roundabout and provide a view corridor and also accessway through the retail back to the shopping center. And then as you come in, we're looking for some areas to create some good gathering spaces. We're anticipating there'll probably be a coffee shop over in the corner of our retailer here, creating a gathering space, not just on the sidewalk here, but out across the street and create some green space as you're coming in and create a nice vista as you're coming into the shopping center, creating green spaces in between the buildings. And we hadn't gotten into a lot of detail yet, but a lot of what our focus will be going forward is to really start to develop some of these spaces, creating some green space here. Obviously, the residential has a lot of green space as well, but how does that look? How do we create a sense of place for this? Obviously, we have a large retailer, and how do we really take a large retailer like that and a lot of retail and obviously a lot of parking and create a good feel to it and create some spaces that are places where people can gather and feel good about? We are showing a couple of drive-throughs here. I expect that'll be a topic of conversation. Burger King has an existing drive-through at their existing location. We're assuming that we're going to have to provide that in some form or fashion for them. And then kind of a small drive-through here for Walgreens, for pharmacy pickups. We don't have plans for this building yet, but the thought is there'd probably be a restaurant in here that we'd like to have some sort of pickup as well. So, Young, if you could go back and just kind of, we'll walk through the phasing real quick. I think that helps explain how we got to where we are. So, our thought on Phase One, as I mentioned, we need to relocate Marshalls, Burger King, and the Walgreens. So, what we want to do is start to selectively demo some of these areas. This will be the one wing of shops between the Marshalls and the Walgreens and the associated parking with that. Then these buildings will be vacant. This can come down, and we can start planning for the residential. Now, we will have a partner in the residential. We are a retail investment company, so we don't do residential, but we have a partner that we've been talking to who's pretty excited about doing the residential here. And then we'll start prepping this pad here for the Walgreens. Okay, next. So, we'll start to build that first phase. The residential will start coming up out of the ground. We'll get the Walgreens, Burger King, and the Marshalls built, so then we can move the, move Marshalls over, move Walgreens over, move Burger King over. Next slide. And then we'll start to demo the middle portion of the site. And part of this is we need to keep the tenants open. They need to be, they need to continue to operate, particularly somebody like a pharmacy. You can't close a pharmacy for 12 months. People go elsewhere and they'll never come back. We all know how that is. You get your pharmacy, and that's your pharmacy. That stands true with other retailers as well. People get in the habit of going to certain locations, so these retailers really want to stay open. Next slide, please. So, we'll build the major retailer. The residential may not come in Phase Two. It all kind of depends on how quickly this leases up. It may be a little bit behind that, but we're just showing it here. As part of that, we'll go ahead and get the surrounding retail in this main area built as well. And then, next slide, then we'll demo the last portion of the site, next slide, and then come back and build the final retail there. So, we're assuming all of this will take about three years. We're hoping to get through planning and permitting in the next year, and then take approximately three years after that, one year for each phase. We might be able to speed that up a little bit, depending on construction timing. As you probably know, construction costs are completely out of sight right now, so that's a big obstacle for us right now, trying to understand how that's going to impact our overall development and certainly from a timing perspective, because we are dealing with an existing center with all the existing infrastructure. We are requesting some public assistance in the form of a TIF, and that will go purely to just the infrastructure. We have existing tenants that are coming down that we're going to have to put back, build back new spaces for them, and they're not enamored with the idea of paying us more rent to, just to be in a different building. So, that is pretty much the bulk of it. If you'd go to the 3D images that you have at the end of the participate of the slide, oh, okay, we've got the model going. So, up in the corner here, this is what I was talking about, the Phase Two of the residential. So, one of the things that we wanted to do here that we think could be pretty interesting is to actually bridge the road here. So, this road will continue on through out to 65th Street, and we thought we could create a bridge with the residential. Residential could be connected over to the retailer and really just create kind of some interesting spaces in here, some gathering spaces, as we had talked about, some places to walk through and into the main area of the residential. And then as you're coming down the street, just have some good landscaping, some wide sidewalks. We realize this is a large tenant, but trying to bring the scale of that down. The building, I'm sorry if you go to the left a little bit, the building over here with this retail will be two-sided, so you'll have storefront along here, obviously hasn't been developed yet, so folks can come in the front there. There'll also be ideally sitting areas out here, and we'd love to have some restaurants with some outdoor seating areas out along here, along this street, which will have kind of a nice feel to it and much slower traffic. And then if you just go down 66th Street over toward the corner, you see the Marshalls there in the back, and then, you know, just creating some, a nice gathering space out here. So, as you're coming, as you're approaching that corner, it just has a nice feel and a nice presence on the street and some interesting things happening out here, and just creating a nice vista in through the center. Once again, these will be, this will be two-sided architecture, well, four-sided really, but they'll have storefronts along the street and storefronts along the backs as well. We do have some neighbors that we need to work with. We have not sat down yet with Partnership Academy. We plan to do so once we have a little bit more developed plan and make sure that their circulation is working well and that we're being a good neighbor with them. So, that's really the highlights. Lauren, do I, anything else I need to add? Todd, you good? Okay, with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you for the presentation, and I just want to make a note, we do have the leaders from Partnership Academy right here with us, so it would be a great opportunity to make sure that you guys switch your information and make plans to connect.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, and then I saw Chair Rudolph. So, go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, this is kind of long, but I promise to only talk once for the most part. So, thank you for showing us. We're obviously really glad to have you at the table. I'm sure that you've heard from us many times that we would like to see you do something, so we're excited to have you here. And there's a lot to like here, but I have a lot of concerns as well. I think there's, might be a temptation for all of us to kind of look at the current hub site and then look at this and be like, well, this is a lot better. I mean, that's hard to argue with and think, okay, we should, we should do this. But I, I think we need to compare this to everything else we've built in our downtown in the last 40 years even, and there's only one project that's even similar to this level of kind of like a large parking lot auto orientation, and that's the LA Fitness Project, Lyndale Station to the west. Nothing else is like that. Everything else is multi-story, mixed-use, significantly more urban and higher value for Richfield. And that Lyndale Station project I want to add was a really remarkable situation where they didn't get a dime of subsidy. It was built during the Great Recession, and even then, if you read the meeting minutes, it was kind of a hold your nose and vote for it. There were a lot of hesitation about that project. There are certain aspects to this that I know what business you're in. I know what you're proposing. I don't expect that you're, like, I expect that that big retail tenant is going to be there. That's inevitable. But I think, I'm concerned when everything is looking inward and centered toward that one retail tenant, that we've seen what it looks like when we have a large vacancy like that rainbow closing, where it creates this black hole in the whole development. And my concern is that in 15 years, that retailer decides they belong somewhere else, and they leave that site vacant, and it drags down this entire beautiful development with it. So, I don't think this meets the standard of what we've set for our downtown in terms of high value. I don't think, in its current form, this justifies any subsidy, but I think it's definitely on the right track. And just to give a few specific ideas of what I'm seeing that I'm concerned about, and I'll share this with staff as well because it's detailed. I'm happy with the residential component, but I'm concerned that it's all packed on the west side. It isn't mixed with the rest of the development at all. And in particular, Nicollet Avenue and 66th Street is probably our busiest intersection of bus routes. We want people to have access to transit, and they're as far away as they possibly could be. I'm really concerned about the frontage along 66th Street. I do love that you took that corner detail from the comprehensive plan. That's very similar. That looks really nice. But going out 66th, it's, it's drive-throughs in the backside of a Walgreens, and it's out of your property, but the Popeyes, as you're proposing it, there would be three drive-throughs on your property, and then the Popeyes drive-through along 66th Street. And although I love your concept of a Main Street, 66th Street is Richfield's Main Street, and I would like to see you do more there. And I also want to say, you know, it's, this is a really, it's a nice area. 66th Street is beautiful since we redid it. It's also a really unique spot where you have holy angels across the street. It's a beautiful vista. I think there's more you could do with it and benefit yourself. Two other things, I would like to see both north-south connections that were shown in the comprehensive plan. If you are interested or agreeable to it, I think Richfield should consider being open to allowing those to be public streets and obviously take maintenance responsibilities and so on, or at least allow one of them to do that. I think that would provide more flexibility for you in the future and more flexibility for the site. And then finally, the addition of the, the additional drive-throughs really, really trouble me. Again, thinking of the context of this, being in a downtown area, being on these transit lines, as our code would allow it, you could not do that many drive-throughs. You certainly couldn't do double drive-throughs. You couldn't do drive-throughs facing the street. So, the idea that you would go get a ton of leniency to just pack the site with drive-throughs is really troubling to me. We want this to be intensely pedestrian-friendly. It does a lot of things right. I'm really excited to see the residential added, but I think you could continue to do a lot better. So, again, I will share that because I realize that's a lot of detail. I'll share that with staff, but thank you for listening.
Can I ask just a clarification for the, is this on? For the second street cutting through, are you referring to this right here?
I mean, that was, what was roughly shown. You, obviously, that exact alignment could change, but I would like to see two connections north-south for the site. So, I don't know if it's necessary that Marshalls and the other tenant touch each other or what, but...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner and Chair Rudolph.
You know, having grown up in Richfield, in South Minneapolis, you know, I remember when the Hub pretty much opened. I was, I was a young kid. You know, it was a place to go. This is incredible to me. Having gone to the Hub shop there, it was either the Hub or Southell, and it was the only shopping centers around. Seeing what you're doing, not only with the current tenants in making sure that you keep them, as well work around them. I think this is, personally, I think this is a wonderful plan. I'm really impressed with what you came up with.
Thank you, Chair. Any other comments or questions from folks? Councilmember Wayland and then Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo several of Councilmember Hayford O'Leary's comments. I don't think I was quite that detailed, but the general sentiment is the same that I, this, I guess, in having residential and retail, is mixed-use, but is not what I think of as mixed-use. And I guess I'm a little confused. I don't claim to be a development expert, but typically, we see developments that are higher, that are pushing the upper limits of what we would want to see in any given area. And I guess I'm, frankly, it feels underutilized to have so many single-story buildings, and I, and so much parking, like, over half the land is parking. To me, I am really excited about the residential space. I am really excited about the outdoor spaces, but to me, this feels like it would be a new version of what we have with straight lines instead of diagonals, when I feel like we, there's a real opportunity to here to build up and have to more fully utilize the space. And so, I guess my question is, is there a particular reason you're so focused on single-story and not having, like, housing above the retailer, office space above the retailer, any, I mean, having retail space that's multiple stories or anything of that nature?
Well, the answer is quite simple. Actually, we're retail, we're a retail company, so that's what we do. We don't do mixed-use typically. That's really not our expertise. So, this plan is really based on what our expertise is.
Thank you. First of all, we really appreciate you bringing this forward because we've been wanting to redevelop the Hub. I'm very pleased that you worked with Marshalls and Burger King and Walgreens so that they can remain open. So, I'm curious about some of the smaller tenants. You know, we have some small businesses and people that have been here for quite some time, and some people that are brand-new that we're excited about. Is there any plan to try and figure out a way so that they can stay as well?
I wouldn't say that there is a plan today. It doesn't mean we're opposed to it. What we really were trying to do is plan around people who had long-term leases that were constraints on the property. So, we do have other small shop space, so to the extent somebody wants to stay, we're happy to talk with them.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember, I mean, Commissioner Strusset, and then Commissioner Sirma, and then Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I echo Councilmembers' comments about being grateful for the plan and the movement on the site. I do think it is strongly vehicle-oriented, and I had hoped to see something more pedestrian-friendly, pedestrian-oriented, and I think that that's what our guiding calls for. It's still, it feels like a project that's designed around cars, and I would love to see a project that was more designed around people. There's concern about the segregation of residential and retail, and was curious about affordability of that residential. Is that going to be market rate, or what did you, what was, is there any intention for that residential space as of now? Thank you.
I'm sorry, what are you doing? Yeah, the intention is to have an affordability component to it. It is market rate, or intended to be market rate, so we hadn't finalized that with our residential partners, but that is the goal, is to have an affordability piece to it.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to echo that I agree with the points made, especially by Councilmembers Hayford O'Leary and Wayland, especially about how, I mainly feel like this is kind of a reconfiguration, what we already have. However, I would like to emphasize the accessibility to the major transit node, especially at 66th and Nicollet. And I really want to promote that if, in this plan, placing the uses that are most conducive to transit users closest to that node. I see the Walgreens being moved quite a ways away from that intersection in this plan. Currently, it's quite close to the both 515 and 18 buses stops, but this places the Walgreens quite away from Route 18, a high-frequency route used by many people, quite a bit of a walking distance, especially for folks who can't walk as far. I mean, my own, my own preference would be to see, for instance, like, the Walgreens and Burger King switched here to place the Walgreens pharmacy closer to the major transit stops over at that intersection, and putting the less transit-oriented use further away from there. That's my thoughts on that. And I also would just like to ask, would this plan alter the curb lines at all along, especially along Nicollet and 66th, that could affect transit usage along those corridors? Thank you.
There is no plan to change the curb lines, so we are aware that there are transit stops at both those locations. So, we, this is early in the concept, so we hadn't designed anything into that, but yeah, we're, but that's, that's a really interesting point. Hadn't thought about the pharmacy having access to those bus stops. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
Well, I just wanted to say, I really do like that it has a grocery component to it. I think ever since the closing of Rainbow, I think people have really wanted a grocery shopping option in this neighborhood again. I think people have really missed that, so I do appreciate that. Kind of following up on what Councilmember Supple was talking about, I think we all know the pattern, is that when new construction happens, a lot of times, kind of smaller, kind of mom-and-pop-type shops can't afford the new lease rates. And I know in my years of involvement in Richfield, I've heard people talk about, well, there's ways to make that happen. There's ways that you can kind of work the finances to make it happen, but I never have seen it happen. And, and I don't know if there's a way, we always talk about affordability in terms of residential. I don't know if there's any way to make some affordability in some units for commercial as well, but if there would be, I would appreciate that. I, I think that kind of the small shops with their own identity are very important to the community because they help kind of build the character of the community. You know, I, we all shop at, you know, the national chains, and I do myself, and they're an important part of the commercial mix, but it would certainly be great if we could have some space that would be available for kind of the unique, kind of one, one-type shops. And then this one final comment, I know you're, some of the councilmembers have talked about possibly higher density of the site, and you're, you know, I understand your expertise isn't in residential and mixed-use, but, you know, I guess I would maybe encourage you to maybe in, with this project, maybe kind of push the boundaries, because in this project, I would be comfortable with higher-density usage, you know, possibly residential above the retail, and maybe this would be a great opportunity for, you know, for your company to kind of push the boundaries and, you know, seek new boundaries.
Since that has come up a couple of times, are there any thoughts about what that density could be? I mean, is there an amount that's too much, or? I don't even know if that's a fair question to ask. I mean, just trying to get, put some brackets around that. What would that look like? Because my high-density and your high-density may be totally different things.
Community Development Director, were you going to respond to that, or should I open it up to folks?
Thank you. I was just going to quickly look at the plan. In general, our comprehensive plan sets density limits, and they're quite high here. I want to say 100 or 150 units per acre. And then, I believe these guiding principles also set general height allowances. So, I think in this area, what people were considering when we were putting this together was, you know, around six stories was probably the top, but it's a, it's a planned unit development, so I think there's, there's some flexibility there if you would look at taller than that.
Okay.
But, but we can take a quick, better look through this, and I can get you some specifics on it.
Yeah, just put some brackets around it for me.
And then I think some folks have some responses to that. Chair Rudolph and then Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
You know, I could see something like, you know, the size of even City Bell on this site, you know. You know, I think it would fit well. I think, I'm not sure how many stories is that, 10, 12?
At least.
At least?
Yeah.
13? I think that something like that could fit really well on a site like this, and I don't, I don't think anybody here would be opposed to something like that.
Yeah, I just, pretty much the same sentiment as Chair Rudolph. You could propose a 10-story building or more, and I think people would be happy with it, but I would say there's lots of increments between here and there, and I think we'd be interested in that, too. But what I did want to add specifically is, you know, we've had a lot of apartment development in Richfield. I'm sure you've, you've been aware of that. I'm sure you've, you've been aware of that. Almost every time people are uncomfortable with the density of something, they say, "Go build that at the hub," like, over and over and over again. "Go build that at the hub." So let's, let's do it then.
Councilmember Troutman.
Yeah, thank you. And just sharing, just sharing the appreciation to just, to be at the table with you, I just want to say, welcome, and we're glad, we're glad that you're here, and we're really glad to be in conversation with you. Similar comments, and I appreciate you just sharing what your, what your expertise is and how you've partnered, you've, you've found one partner, and to the extent you're open to other partners, I think you see in the, in this room, you'll be rewarded with even more partners. You know, that opportunities will tend to multiply as you grasp, as you grasp them. And similar comments about the, it's, I think the word heartbreaking is not too strong a word when I think of four drive-throughs in a row on 66th Street, just in terms of this is, this is the heart of our city, and you, Brixmor did not build the hub, which was, which was good in a season, but I think of commercial developments in, in a city that one side of my family came from in Hastings, 120 years later, that commercial development is incredible, because people had vision 120 years ago to make something and generate, you know, cycles go up and down, but it still retains its value. The hub didn't do that. The hub was novel, and then a generation and a half later, let's scrape it, let's do a new thing. And I just really invite you to do something that we don't have to scrape in 50 years. Well, most of us won't be here, but we can do something incredible, because I think you have a lot of goodwill and a lot of openness, and I hope you hear that along with the feedback, that we can, we can do something incredible that we'll never appreciate, because we'll all be gone, and it'll still be here, and it'll be amazing. And when, and just kind of similarly to that, the, the green space, you know, the gathering spaces, you know, are, look like they're just for the, for the residents and not for the, the community primarily, as they're, you know, almost in a, in a courtyard separated from, from everybody. And I don't know if there's an opportunity, I mean, I love the, the three-dimensional view. That was, that was, that was actually really helpful, to kind of envision as it, as it moved around, and you could see that, that corridor through. If, if we could have, you know, commercial in that area, I think just that, that feedback that we really want people living and working, and, and to the extent that, that there's, there's the opportunity for, for commercial and, and office space even, I, we would, we would love to see that. We'd want to, that would be something that would be a lot easier for, for me to say, well, we, I'd really be interested in investing in this, and on a, on a city side, because we're really, we're building something that my grandkids, my great-grandkids all appreciate.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Are there folks who, go ahead, Commissioner?
Thanks, Mayor. I too feel fortunate to be here with you guys. And... Like the others, I'm, I'm fortunate, consider myself fortunate to be here with you guys, and thank you for showing this to us. It's, it's exciting. I want to make a very, very fine point on top of what we've just heard, and, and what I hope to see out of this site is something that makes taking a car there the least attractive I'm excited about calls for increased density and, and height as well, so thank you for letting me say that much.
Commissioner, are there folks who haven't spoken yet that want to share anything? Okay, I'll just add a comment quick, and then I'll keep, we have, it looks like we have plenty of time to keep adding more comments. Honestly, I don't have too much more to say than what's been said, and, and I'll just kind of repeat what I'm hearing from several commissioners and councilmembers, like, the bones are really, really good, and there's some really neat elements, and we are interested as a community to push this, to be more creative, to push more density, and to make it more functional for our community. And there was plenty of different examples as to how to do that. But for us, as folks said, this is our downtown. This is an important, if, if not one of the most important parts of the revitalization of our community, period, and, and it's going to be multi-generational revitalization. So that's how we're seeing it. And I, I don't know that I have much more to add. I will just echo again, Partnership Academy's there, Holy Angels is there, all these other groups around you that are very interested in partnering. I will specifically say Partnership Academy's in the process of growing. They're, they have issues around parking, and I know that that's something that you're probably aware of, but working with them to figure out how, hopefully, that coexistence can work for both Partnership and Brixmor and the hub benefits our entire community, our families and everybody in Richfield. I don't know that I have more to say outside of, I just absolutely agree with what I'm hearing from everybody else. There's a lot of opportunity, and there's a good foundation here, and I'm excited, and I think there's a lot more room to push it. And I was just going to ask a question on behalf of a lot of our residents. When you do, when is, when can you share who the retailer, the grocery retailer will be, even if they're not going to be there for a few years? I think it would help relieve a lot of anxiety of so many people.
Yeah. And I appreciate that, I really do. I just, until they tell me I can disclose, I can't.
But that's something that, once a deal's done, whatever, it doesn't have to be, right, you know? So as soon as you're able to, there's something signed, and you will let us know, so we can let our residents know?
Yes.
That would be great. That's such an important missing asset for our neighbors.
Yeah, and my understanding is they want to be part of the process. We're just not at that point yet.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo, folks are really looking for grocery stores. We especially, I represent the east side of town, and Target is a grocery store, but not a typical one, with a couple small ones, but mostly it's a food desert. I, not knowing who they are, I don't know if this is a model that that store owner has done before, but I know there are a few grocery chains that have started doing more urban-model, multi-story grocery stores. If they're open to that, I, I would be excited about that. The other thing I realized, certainly 66th Street is the, the main thoroughfare and Nicollet as well, but 65th is also going to be redone, also going to have pedestrian and bike trails, has a bunch of residential right there. I would hope they would feel, this design as it is does not feel very inviting for them to walk to the grocery store. I, obviously, semi-trucks delivering stuff have to go somewhere, but I would hope that even if it is this exact layout, that there could be something on that backside that makes it not feel so much like the backside. And then the last thing I'd say is that I, adding on to the conversation about density, I know that parking structures are stupid, expensive, and also ugly, but I, I guess I would rather see an ugly parking structure with a smaller footprint than so much of the footprint just being parking. And so if, as you look at building up, having it more dense, most likely then needing more parking. I personally would not be opposed to a parking structure being part of the plan, and think there's places like 50th and France, or in St. Louis Park, another one I was just thinking of that I forgot, but there's places where they've found ways to incorporate that that doesn't become the main thing you're looking at.
Other comments or questions from folks? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Just want to follow up with, with one note. I, you know, seeing that this was coming, seeing this initial plan sent out last night, I went on your website and looked at some of the other projects, and I do want to say, although I have clearly expressed I don't think this goes far enough, compared to many of your other projects, I appreciate how ambitious this is. I hope you go much further, but this actually is much closer to what I want than what I saw in some of your previous work. So I really appreciate you growing with us, and I hope you continue to do that. The one other comment I was going to say is, I was actually floored how quickly you're saying you want to do this. That's mostly a good thing, but I would definitely express that, at least from my end, I would far prefer it take longer and be done right than get it done really quick. But I was pleasant, I was delighted to hear you were saying three years. That was shockingly quick to me, so.
It's aggressive, but we're excited to get going.
Great. Any other comments or questions from folks? All right, well, I think you can hear that we are very excited, and there's a lot of positive feedback and support, and a lot of pushing to keep going and really leverage the space. And I'll just pass it to staff in terms of summarizing anything, or asking if you all need any more from us, and maybe what next steps are.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I, I think, you know, we took some notes here, and Brixmor has your feedback, so the next steps would be for them to go back and kind of digest that and think if they need to make adjustments. We'll work with them on that. We'll work that with them on a sketch plan process as they're ready to move forward. So it'll be a bit of an iterative process here. I expect that you'll be back with this group at some point and talking to the neighborhood. So, yep, we'll just keep you posted as, as they move forward.
Great. Thank you, everyone. I adjourn our meeting.